A regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee at 7:35 PM on Thursday, January 13th, 2022. In accordance with Governor McKee's Executive Order 22-01 dated January 6, 2022, the Cumberland School Committee intends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person by calling 1-312-626-6799. Webinar ID 95866592759, or they can join via Zoom. And the link is on the events calendar and the Cumberland Schools website. Welcome back to Zoom, everyone. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
For which it stands. One nation. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. In compliance with Governor's Executive Order 22-01 dated January 6, 2022, discussion or vote on whether there is public access to the meeting through adequate alternative means. And Mr. Chandler, it looks like we may have members of the public?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I think it's, I don't think we need to vote on that. I think it's just a discussion. I remember. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the regular meeting 12-9, 2021, the approval of minutes from the executive session 12-9, 2021, the enrollment report 1-1, 2022, the school police report 12-1, 2022, 2021, the school bus inspection report 1-1, 2022, the residency truancy report 1-1, 2022.
Madam Chair, if I may, and this is unusual for me, I think you do have to approve the agenda, even though you don't have to approve the Governor's order.
Oh, you're right.
Of agenda, is it? So I think Mr. Fiorello was correct to make such a motion.
There, that approval of the agenda. Thank you for that. Welcome back to Zoom. Still getting my Zoom legs under me. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Fiorello. A second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather and Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it seven to zero. Thank you for that. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Monica and Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Duncanson?
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee. A few items for tonight. I have two appointments. First, Fallon Waters, Grade 3 Cumberland Hill, one year only, effective December 20th, 2021. Second, Sally Cassillon, Special Educator ISS at Cumberland High School, one year only, effective January 3rd, 2022. Coaching appointments, appointment of Caroline Fromon, Swimming Boys, Girls Assistant, effective December 27th, 2021. The retirement of Fasil Palumbo, Social Studies at McCourt, after 24 years of service, effective date of June 30th, 2022. Congratulations to Mrs. Palumbo. And four resignations tonight. First, Kelly Marzini, Paraprofessional Pals at Community, effective January 4th, 2022. Resignation of Christine Medici, Paraprofessional Cumberland High School Trade Program, effective January 4th, 2022. Alyssa Coleman, Building Secretary at North Cumberland Middle School, effective January 8th, 2022. And Lindsay Pachet, Special Educator Success DBP at McCourt, effective January 28th, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Duncanson. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Excuse me, report out of executive session meeting on January 13th, 2022. The first subitem, report out of executive session votes. We did vote in executive session. And we voted seven to zero to uphold the superintendent's recommendation on the student discipline hearing. The next item on the agenda is vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello. Second. Second by Mr. D'Monica and Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report. I just wanted, with the school budget timeline, I just wanted to remind everyone, we're about to enter the most wonderful time of the year. And I wanted to remind you of the sequencing of how this works, just high level. So we are planning on doing a school budget workshop, similar to how we did last year with Mr. Frignano, with updated information so that we're all well grounded in that. That is open, will be open to the public. And we'll invite the members of the town council to that. So we will be planning that for the beginning of February. And then as, you know, as part of the town charter regulations, we will have a joint meeting with the town council, a joint budget meeting with the town council. And that will have to happen before the middle of February. So I will be working with President Kinch on arranging that date and time. So that will be coming. So just heads up on that. And then, you know, the other big items, we need to submit our budget to the town by April 4th. And then the mayor submits his budget to the town council, May 9th, by May 9th. And then there are two public hearings that have to happen by June 6th. And then two votes that have to happen by June 13th. So just a reminder of that sequence, we'll have lots of discussion about that. But just a heads up for now that you'll be seeing some of those things coming up. And that's all I had about the school budget timeline. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Over to you, Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, good evening. First up, we have some recognitions, and I'm pleased to turn things over to Principal Costa at the high school. Mr. Costa, are you with us?
I am here. I'm going to try to get through this with a little cough as possible here. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Thank you for this opportunity to share about the successful musicians we have at Cumberland High School. Every year, high school musicians across the state are honored by their selection to both National and State Music Association. This honor reflects the hard work and dedication demonstrated by those identified students and their teacher leaders. Cumberland High School is rich with talented students. And in just a few moments, our music teachers, Mrs. Amanda Santo and Mr. Mike Faroche, will be presenting these inspiring musicians. Before they do, I would be remiss if I did not point out and thank both Mrs. Amanda Santo and Mr. Mike Faroche for their continued support and dedication to our music programs. We appreciate the hard work and long hours that go into supporting our students through not only this process, but all of our shows, programs, concerts, and awards nights. Congratulations to all of you. I would now like to invite Mrs. Santo to introduce the Carl selections, followed by Mr. Faroche, who will present to you the band honorees. Mrs. Santo?
Thank you, Mr. Costa. We have 13 chorus and clef students who were accepted into the Romeo All-State Chorus this year. We're so proud of these talented, hardworking, and dedicated music students. Our students are Samantha Bernardo, Lila Biddle, Heather Bliss, Camilla Britto, Christian Chicoine, Brandon Azowski, Anna Gomez Velez, Harry Kenyon, Robbie Kenyon, Zia Myers, Sarah O'Connell, Cole Pepin, and Ethan Tremblay. We're grateful for the support of their teachers, our administration, their families, their friends. These students are the central point in a very special community in our program at CHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you, Mr. Costa. On the band side, we have about seven or eight kids. Starting with the senior all-state band, these kids work so hard. They have to audition for this. Their competition are all of the high school musicians in Rhode Island. And it's such, such an honor to have them selected to represent Cumberland. Mason Foss, a junior, he plays the alto sax, and he ranked first in the state for alto. So that's first place amongst all those high school alto sax players. Nathaniel Gomes is a sophomore. He's playing the timpani, and he's first place as well. Just so awesome for these kids. Connor Bowesman on the French horn, fourth place in the state. Eric Bliss on the trombone, he ranked seventh. Accepted into the Senior All-State Orchestra. Eva Aburaya on violin ranks 18th place. And Jasmine Dowling on the trumpet, second place. Senior All-State Jazz Ensemble, Nate Gomes, placed second in the state for jazz drum set. Junior All-State Band are just middle school in grade nine, who can audition for that. And we had Desmond Roper on the clarinet in 12th place. And also accepted for the All-National Concert Band. That's all 50 states. We're really proud of Jasmine Dowling on the trumpet. So thank you so much. It's a great time to enroll in music. So if you're a parent listening to this school committee meeting, we have music classes for everyone, general music, no experience required. We'd love to teach you how to play either a band or in the chorus. We also have guitar, piano, whatever you'd like. We got a class for you. So thank you so much, and I appreciate the time.
I'd also like to add, we have one chorus student who was accepted into the All-National Honor Choir, and I'd like to congratulate Harry Kenyon on that honor. Thank you.
Mrs. Santo, was there, oh, Mrs. Santo, is there video or an audio of the chorus?
Um, I did send a video along.
Mr. Chandler does have access. Mike, if you could roll the video, please. That's good.
Thank you. That was, that was fantastic. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Principal Costa. Fantastic. Madam Chair, next up, we have John Johnson from Happy Baskets, scheduled to come. He couldn't make it tonight, but he did give me an email that I can share with you about Happy Basket. So if I could. Good afternoon, Philip. I don't know where the Happy Basket program would be without the wonderful students, teachers, and parents of the Cumberland School System. It seems that every year, each school outdoes itself with food donations. Just when I think we are low on food, they all step up and make it happen. My back hurts from carrying all the food they donated, and that's a very good thing. The schools in Cumberland are why we are the happy, why we, the Happy Basket Program, are able to do what we do. I'm very proud to be connected with all of them. Because of their generosity, we're able to provide more than 500 families with holiday baskets of food and gifts. They all helped create smiles all over town and showed us something about what it means to give. Thank you all. You are the best. Merry Christmas, John Johnson, director. And he'll try to come out in person in a future meeting. So he was very, very happy with the effort. So that's Happy Basket. Some, Madam Chair, my next piece, COVID, something we seem to talk about every month, and this, this month, a couple of different data points for you on COVID positivity, if I could. First, as you know, around the country in Rhode Island, it's, the open question has been, you know, can we keep schools open? Can we keep, you know, everything running? And in Cumberland, everyone really has pitched in. It's really been amazing to see everyone just helping out. In terms of absences, I have some data to share with you. From the employee side first, if I give you just a number of the all-in number, every adult, right, long-term absence, short-term, everyone, from January 3rd to tomorrow, forecast. On January 3rd, we had 80 absents. The 4th, 93. The 5th, 115. That was our high watermark for us. And to give you a sense, anything over 100 is really difficult historically. So 115 was really, really difficult. On Thursday, the 6th, it was 107. Then we had the snow, which wasn't really a bad thing, right? A little snow reprieve. The 10th, 105. The 11th, 94. The 12th, 81. Today, 77. Tomorrow, as of quarter of eight this morning, we're at 78. Friday normally is a heavy day for most schools in Cumberland. It's no, no different. But it is trending down. So I'm hoping that trend continues. That is a good trend line. But are we out of the woods yet? No. But you all watch the news. I think we have to hang on a little longer, but certainly we're, you know, away from the 100 absence mark. In terms of student absenteeism, we did track it by building for the same gate range. I won't read every school and every date to you. Just to give you a sense, the high watermark seems to be January 6th. At Ashton, the high watermark was 63. And yesterday was 26. BF Norton, it was 98. Now we're at 56. Community was 101. Now we're at 65. North Cumberland Middle was 95, now at 54. McCourt was the high watermark of 104. We're still high there. We're around 92. Cumberland High School, 321 was the high watermark, and we're down to 227. Keep in mind also, that's, you know, everyone included. Also factored into that, you have some kids coming in late who might be, you know, marked absent in the data set, but then come in, you know, second, third period. Long story short, you know, we still obviously have a challenge in our state. As you saw, I think in the news, you know, Rhode Island has the highest COVID positivity of any state in the country right now. So that's today in the news cycle. So we certainly, you know, are concerned, but I am walking the schools a lot. And, you know, we are, we are open. Kids are learning. I walk the hallways and see it every day. So it is encouraging. I know there is, you know, there are some that would make the argument, we should go virtual. To me, I just can't support the idea myself personally, just seeing what kids would lose being at home. It's just not the same thing. So we'll keep updating you with the numbers. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that topic.
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, you have, obviously, the staffing situation. I commend you for being, again, Mrs. Duncanson, for keeping the schools open. But in order to do so, you've had to, with this substitute shortage, you've had to use other teachers. I think it goes without saying that teachers are burnt out. My first question is, have you had to use administrators, department heads to cover classes, as has been the case in some other districts?
Yeah, we have. The case in point, I'm the high school principal right now. For the next, last three days. So yes, we are covering when we have to.
My next question has to do with, it's only January. We have several months to go before the end of the year, and there are questions about how long we sustain. Teachers are very susceptible to burnout. They're feeling it. What resources are in place to, if we have any resource in place to prevent teacher burnout, which I think could be contributing to the staffing crisis?
Right. I mean, right now, we have an employee assistance program. We're hoping, hopefully can launch that will help folks with any, any stressors, any anxiety, any burnout. We certainly are mindful of that, talking to our principals who talk to their staff around, you know, just how folks are doing. I mean, to be honest, that went into my thinking last week. As you saw in Rhode Island, when we had the snow day, many had a DL day. I think we were only one of three that had a real old-fashioned snow day. To me, we needed that. So I think that was important. So I think we have to really, you know, be mindful where people are. The trend line is coming down, so I'm hoping that continues. And, you know, that would be great if it did, but that's, I think where we are. I think we have to keep listening to people, and that's hopefully what we're doing.
What is our substitute pool looking like? Perhaps, Mrs. Duncanson, has it been an increase, decrease? Are we still struggling to find substitute teachers?
Well, we continue to hire them throughout. Like, I, I think I heard them hiring two this week. The problem is, is that they're not always available every day. And so there are, there are gaps. We're running about, and this is really bad, a 40% fill rate for substitutes, and I acknowledge how bad that is. But I think we're actually doing better than my counterparts in other districts. I have had conversations with them, and they are actually shocked that we're able to fill as many as we have, especially the long term. So we do have a substantial number of long terms right now that are taking up a bunch of our, of our substitutes, but we're hoping to get them back in rotation soon.
Mrs. Rogowski?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Duncanson, did you say a 40% fill rate? So does that mean 60% of the slots are being covered by other teachers and administrators? Or warm bodies in the buildings, teachers?
Or their substitutes aren't needed for them. So like, say, an itinerant teacher doesn't necessarily need a substitute, but that, that would mean not a, for instance, a art or a music teacher, those kids aren't getting those, that, that, so the teacher, their home teacher doesn't get the break unless somehow the principal can work out something. So classroom teachers are our number one priority when filling with substitutes for that, for for coverage reasons, for safety reasons.
Okay, so I want to kind of echo what Mr. Collins was saying. My concern too is that we all know that school is the best place for students to be. It's the best way that they learn, being in the classroom, having teachers around them. However, we are lacking a lot of students being in the classroom right now, or we were, and thankfully, that seems to be trending down. Hopefully, we'll continue to trend down, but I'm worried about these students getting lost in the cracks. I mean, when my daughter, my daughter had COVID, and she missed 10 days, and her teacher was excellent. I will, she provided work in speaking with other parents in the district who have children who have been out. They have not gotten work. They have not had Google meets. They have not had work assigned. They, teachers have said, we'll give them work when they get back. There's been no learning. There's been no lessons. And I'm worrying how prevalent this is right now, if students are falling through the cracks while they are out, because we don't have any live streaming, any distance learning. We don't have that option. I'm concerned, especially with looking at RICAS scores, which is everyone's concern, and making sure we're, you know, our popular phrase, close the learning gap and all of that. I do wonder if students are being harmed by staying open, because we cannot offer a virtual option to everyone and thus reaching all of the students who are out. And I, again, I, I know the classroom is the best. It is the best. It is, in some ways, probably the safest option for students. But I would just be curious about that. And not only the, the students getting the education, but I would wonder too, how much it's affecting the teachers and their ability to teach. I don't know if we have, I, you know, I'm hearing of teachers standing in hallways. These are from, from kids telling me, teachers standing in hallways grabbing sub, or making sure that classes are covered, classes being pooled. You know, teachers not getting planning periods, teachers not having the ability to have that kind of downtime. And I, I wonder if we're getting the best of our teachers at this point. And I can't, I can't think that we possibly are. And so I would just, I, there is no easy solution. And, and I don't think going virtual is a solution. I don't think staying in schools, I don't, there isn't one, but I would just like to kind of see, and just make sure that attention is paid to do to those things when looking at everything. But I don't know that we're getting the best for our students, not at the fault of the teachers, just as the fault of life, and the best of our teachers in this current situation. So.
I think Mr. Collins is a hand, Madam Chair.
Oh, I didn't know if anyone was responding to that. All right, Mr. Collins?
I think Mrs. Rogowski painted an excellent picture as to why the teachers are burnt out. I mean, I don't teach in Cumberland, but I haven't had a planning period in about two and a half months. It is, it's the reality, and I think the more the public understands what teachers are going through, and I know administration already understands that. But to jump on what Miss Rogowski said, and I, this is a worst-case scenario, obviously, planning. But is the district prepared in the worst-case scenario that there would be a staffing crisis or a closure or a mass outbreak? How difficult would it be to immediately go to distance learning for one day or one week? Would that be a challenge? Do we already have a plan in place?
Right. First, in terms of plans, just to give you an update, you may recall the state asked districts to turn plans in for a DL, right, a while, well, back in the fall. They recently, this week, the regions had a meeting again, and districts must turn plans in again by January 26th, because RIDE was unsure if they had the authority to grant DL days. So that's, but the planning, please, so to answer your question, our plan is, and we have official plan to pivot the question. It's, it's not seamless. There is some, some clunkiness to it, both, as you even saw, just all of us zooming tonight, right, in the capacity of handing out devices. But I told Mike Chandler earlier, we can't waste a good crisis. Cumberland is, from my experience, one of the few districts not one-to-one, and we're actually remedying that now. Grade 5 is being outfitted from a purchase that you approved a little while back. Then we're going to go to grade 4, grade 3. So I really fully expect to go, go one-to-one. K12, most likely still being in the classroom, but passing them out to take them home. If we had to pivot the earlier grades, it's a sequence of passing out devices for the K12s, N3s, and just logging who gets what device. So last time, I think I remember in Cumberland, you had like a Chromebook pickup time. They came by, right, and passed them out. You could pivot. Once again, I am optimistic. Numbers going down. I know I keep saying that, but they are going down. I was quite honestly, last, the fifth or sixth, when those numbers were 115, in talking to principals, that was our breaking point. To me, we were, we were on the verge of closing. As you saw last week, some high schools closed, right, four or five of them? We were right there. But yeah, we can pivot, but it's not, not seamless. But we can, and we will, if we have to. Madam Chair, thank you. Obviously, if members have questions as the weeks or days go on, as you know, just connect with me, and I can give you updates on, you know, where we are in each building, if anything's happening regarding COVID and the pandemic. Happy to do that. And Madam Chair, that concludes my part of, actually, no, I have school construction. I have one more. Two quick things for school construction. The admin are moving back. Originally, it was, I think, forecasted like a six-to-eight-week activity. And, you know, as with all construction, here we are. So moving back tomorrow. So the field office gym closes tomorrow. And admin, actually, they are in an office space tomorrow. So special ed, HR, business superintendent, we're all back where we usually are. So that's, that's good news. The second piece tonight, the committee will be looking at some items at Cumberland Hill. Mr. Fiorello, myself, Mr. Frignano are on the building committee. We tackled several areas for the committee to look at regarding, you know, enhancements for Cumberland Hill. Things like, you know, attention to the cubby spaces, the classrooms, the sink areas, the entryway. So a lot of things for the committees to look at. So that's exciting. The building committee, I think the highlight was last meeting, they actually walked the construction site. And seeing is believing. Talking about construction is okay, but they walked around and very into it, actually added on, I think, some ideas to, you know, enhance the scope of the project. So I think we'll make that a routine. We'll walk Garvin next. We've got Garvin, I think, and show them the space. I think it's helped. We'll walk Garvin next. We've got Garvin, I think, and show them the space. I think it's helpful to have them see what's, what's happening. So that's exciting. And as always, if you want a tour of Cumberland Hill as it's, uh, progressing, please let me know. We can get you in there to, um, see the, the progress. And certainly we can show you the progress of the admin area if you want to come by and see that. Thank you.
Mr. Monica?
Madam Chair, um, Mr. Thornton, how are, with the admin people coming back, how does, how does the public come into the building to get to the admin side? Did we put in the new door we, uh, possibly talked about? Or did they have to?
No, they actually, uh,
to the school?
We, if you walk in the main area, there's a vestibule array box that's been created. And, uh, when that's, uh, you know, fully operational, you go to the right for the school, or the left for admin. And, um, the transportation, um, secretarial clerk person at that area behind that, that glass buzzes you in and left for us, right for the school. Original plans had a new door going into HR, but in looking at that, we pivoted from that, because that was putting a door right through HR. HR is where we do confidential things. Personnel files, medical records. We don't want every person in the public walking through HR to get into the admin area. So we changed that plan, actually saved some money and put that money back into the construction project. So you walk into a box, get buzzed in, right school, left admin.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and, uh,
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again to Miss Santo and Mr. Ferochi and all of the students for their great accomplishments. And watching that video, uh, gave me chills, I must say. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Collins?
I, I just, I meant to say to Miss Santo's honorary, uh, Mr. Ferochi, um, it seems like we're, we're seeing this every year. So it's, I think it's also a testament to sustained success from the performing arts. So, um, I think pre-pandemic, they were supposed to go to Carnegie Hall or something, weren't they, before they got canceled? So, um, it's good to see them every year regularly, uh, maintaining the success.
Madam Chair? Uh, yeah, I just want to mention that I think it's really helped having middle school band and chorus, because it'll, it's really started to feed the programs, um, going into the high school.
Okay, all right. The, the next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. First one is fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. The fiscal management subcommittee, uh, met this evening. We didn't meet in December. We had to go to the, uh, full committee, because we did not have a quorum for our single December meeting. Um, a few highlights, uh, we do have eight resolutions before us tonight. Um, but, uh, we payment the bills, uh, in the amount of just over one point six million dollars. A couple of highlights, um, one of the highlights is Sidexo. Um, Food Services is looking at a, uh, currently a three hundred thousand dollar profit as where we stand right now. Um, an astronomical number, according to Ms. Spillane, uh, that number will go up. Uh, she attributes this to the higher reimbursement rate, which we found out this evening, actually, the higher reimbursement rate is going up even higher. Um, as a result of that, um, per ride, we have to reinvest that money into the program, and that's gonna pay for a lot of the resolutions that we had, two of the resolutions that we have before us this evening. Um, she also, uh, briefed us on a contingency plan, the event that Food Services faces a staffing crisis to go to cold lunches. Um, and, uh, Ms. Smith actually raised an issue of making sure parents are notified, uh, in the events. Um, a couple of other things, I think, that's it, just the resolutions and the payment of bills, but that is a highlight right there. And then obviously, um, you already mentioned that we are going into budget season, which will, um, take up a lot of time and energy, and we look forward to, uh, meeting needs for our students for the next fiscal year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is the policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella?
Yes, uh, Policy and Procedures has not met, um, this past cou- this past week. Uh, we hope to meet at the, uh, in a couple of weeks.
Uh, next is the achievement and communi- communication subcommittee update. Um, same as policy and procedures subcommittee, we did not meet last week, but we plan on meeting it, or this week, but we plan on meeting it, um, for our next meeting. And then the next, the last item here is the district health and wellness subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogowski?
District Health and Wellness meets every other month, so we will be meeting at the beginning of February.
Thank you. Right, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. If there's anybody who, from the public who wishes to speak, you can raise your virtual hand. Uh, Mr. Chandler will be on the lookout for you. He'll unmute you, um, and bring you into the meeting. There is a, uh, a three minute time limit, and we just ask you to state your name and your address for the record. So, Mr. Chandler, I, I see one hand raised. Mr. Kinch?
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I might have a little bit of an echo. I'm, I'm, uh, in a room that doesn't have much, uh, uh, in it, so I'm gonna have a little echo, but I, I just want to wish you a first Happy New Year. I haven't been to a meeting since the New Year due to other meeting conflicts, but I just want to start on behalf of the town council to, uh, thank those all-state, uh, uh, students, uh, across Mr. Kenyon with the mixed choir, the all-state chorus, all-state band, the orchestra and Johnson's, uh, assembles. I want to thank them very much uh, for making Cumberland proud as always. Also, uh, Madam Chair, I'm gonna pass on to the council at our meeting uh, on the nineteenth about your, uh, budget workshop. So we'll, uh, we'll get that information out to them on the nineteenth. I also want to inform the school committee that we are also gonna put on a couple of public workshops on the American Rescue Plan Act, on that money and, and where that would fall and what it's gonna cover. So, um, look, keep an eye out for those two public hearings if anybody has an interest. I'm gonna announce those dates after I meet with the mayor, also with the, uh, January nineteenth council meeting. And, um, and the last thing, and I, I'll get off, but I, I do want to echo, uh, Mr. Thornton's comments. I also toured, uh, Cumberland Hill School, and I'll tell you, until you see it, uh, you don't, uh, realize what a construction pro- project really is. So, uh, it was worth it, especially for me as a member of a council, uh, to see that work. So, uh, thank you very much, and I'll just pass on the information you relayed today.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kinch, and thank you for your support, and I'll be in touch with you about scheduling our joint budget meeting, fiscal meeting.
I look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, any other members, um, from the public? Do you see anyone, Mr. Chandler, with their hand raised?
I do not.
Okay. All right, then, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, new business. The first item that we had here is student J Doe discussion of student hearing, if requested by student. This was not requested by the student. So we won't be discussing that tonight. The next item on the agenda is discussion and or vote to approve homeschool instruction request for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Collins. Sorry, I missed that. Um, second by Mr. Fiorella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guys have it seven to zero. Uh, the next item on the agenda is discussion and or vote to approve resolutions. Over to you, Mr. Collins.
I come bearing, uh, belated Christmas gifts, the resolution, so you guys are all very excited. I'm running out of jokes about this. Uh, first up, we have, uh, SCPI dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to purchase the food service items listed below from Kittredge Food Service Equipment and Supplies in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, and on that list, we have a cabinet cook hold oven for Cumberland Hill, a chest freezer for Cumberland Hill, uh, display refrigerated case self-service CHS, a reach-in refrigerator for CHS, a proffer cabinet CHS, and one tilting skillet braising pan, which we learned quite a bit about, uh, for CHS. Uh, this past, uh, fiscal subcommittee, three to zero. This is coming out of the aforementioned, uh, food service meal account, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one twenty twenty-two dash zero one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next, we have SCPI dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero two. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to purchase school cafeteria tables and stools um, from school specialty in amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. And we're looking at forty-nine, uh, tables and forty stools at the high school. Sixteen round tables at Cumberland Hill, and twenty-seven tables in McCourt Middle School. This past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero. And I would, oh, and this is coming out of the, again, the, uh, the food service account. Uh, this past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash O two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is SCPR dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero three. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment to H V Collins of Providence, Rhode Island for the November twenty twenty-one invoice, uh, payment number five for the Cumberland High School swing space in an amount not to exceed three hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, this is coming out of the bond, uh, this past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one twenty twenty-two dash O three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Monica and Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is SCPR dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero four. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment to H V Collins of Providence, Rhode Island, Rhode Island, for the November twenty twenty-one invoice payment number four for J J M Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is coming out of the bond. This past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash O four. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is SCPI dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero five. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the attached change orders at the CHS Transitional Building Swing Space in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-six cents to H V Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island. Uh, this past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash O five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is, uh, SCPR dash zero, uh, one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero six. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the attached change orders at J J M Cumberland Hill Elementary School in the amount of two million, twenty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents to H V Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island. Uh, now, this is coming out of the bond. These change orders, now, this did trigger something in fiscal subcommittee. Um, there was concern, uh, from the fiscal subcommittee that, eh, that these numbers are going up. So a couple of things, uh, that was highlighted, uh, the building, uh, committee, the town builder committee approved these. Uh, this change order in particular at Cumberland Hill, um, deals with, uh, events, the UN events. So the UN events are very, very old. There's some cosmetic things going back to the nineteenth, looks like something from, you know, I Love Lucy, um, in there. So there's some cosmetic, some, you know, uh, but with the UN events, the building committee, it's my understanding, uh, just said, let's get it done, because they, they're on borrowed time. The other option, as of right now, is just some cosmetic improvements to spruce it up a bit. Uh, but that doesn't improve air quality or airflow. Um, I did ask, uh, Dr. Thornton, um, now that we're getting, starting to get into some change orders and starting to add up a little bit, um, I would like, and I think the building subcommittee, uh, the fiscal subcommittee agreed, we would like to see, start seeing a running tally. We have a seventy-nine million dollar bond. Here's how much we've spent so far. I don't think we have to have, uh, you know, governor, the previous governor, Mondo's, uh, on time, on budget, next to the bridge or the road or whatever. Uh, but I think the public, for full transparency, since they approved such a large amount of money, uh, they should be aware of how much we spent and where their money's going. Uh, but this change order, as the other change orders, they did approve, they did pass fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, uh, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero six. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Mr. Fiorella for discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, um, it's very important to understand that each school has its own budget. And we're not gonna be borrowing any money from any other schools. So this is all like an in-house Cumberland Hill budget that we're, uh, using money for. And, uh, Holly Demers from Colliers, who is the, um, the building management company for us, or the project management company for us, has asserted that we're well within, um, the, the, the budget for the Cumberland Hill project. So we're in really good shape and we're getting a lot of work done that needs to get done. Those UN events makes no sense to be doing all this work on the school and not replace UN events that are thirty years old. So I just wanted to, um, assure everyone that we're still in very good financial shape on that project.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorella. So we have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is, uh, SCPR dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment number five, ADS Construction Incorporated, East Providence, Rhode Island, for continued work on phase two of the high school security project in an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, ADS has, uh, has now been paid three hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the total cost of the project of three hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven, ninety-six cents. This past fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica and Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Uh, next, and finally, I have an amended, uh, resolution, SCPI zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero eight. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment number ten, ADS Construction Incorporated of East Providence, Rhode Island, for continued work on phase one of the high school security project in amount not to exceed, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, this was amended because the original resolution at the bottom, uh, actually had a different, uh, amount than the top, so we had to amend it technicality, uh, but it did pass fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero eight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. Okay, thank you for that part of the agenda, Mr. Collins. And now the next part, discussion and or vote to approve payment of bills.
I have bills in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, the payment of bills was approved by fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills um, in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next item on the agenda is school community comments, liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorella?
Madam Chair, I know we, we keep mentioning this, but I think it bears repeating every chance we can, just how much, uh, we all appreciate, or at least I appreciate all the hard work with the staff, everyone from Dr. Thornton down to, you know, all the teachers and staff, support staff. Um, you know, right down to the crossing guards and bus monitors, how much work they're putting in under really stressful times. Um, without them, we would have no school, obviously. So, uh, they're make, they're the ones that are making this work and hopefully, uh, we'll get over this next hump and be able to slow down a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorella. Any other comments from the school committee? And I saw a lot of heads nodding on Mr. Fiorella's comments, so I am sure we all echo and agree and are thankful and grateful for all of the work that the whole staff is putting in and the students. And so then, with no other comments, uh, the next item is
Motion to adjourn.
Executive session, Mr. Thor- Dr. Thornton, executive session tonight?
All set, Madam Chair.
Okay, then, then I- Okay, then the next item to go, um, to adjournment. Mr. Fiorella makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Featherall, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven to zero. We are adjourned at eight twenty-six PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night, folks.